We're here for the. We're here for the special meeting of the city of Monte Sereno City Council. Please do the introduction.
Hey, thank you for joining us this evening for the January seventeen twenty twenty three Monte Sereno City Council Special Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist the council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphones are in line, so please keep your microphones on and continue to speak. For tonight's meetings, we're using Zoom to host the city council staff meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues, such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and enabled to speak to the council. To comment on oral communication or on any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak for agenda item. Only attendees using Zoom application can use the raise hand option for comments. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we're not all in the same room, all votes in this meeting will be taken by roll call.
Thank you. I will call the special meeting of the city of Monte Sereno City Council to order at nine eleven P M. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Lawhee.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walshimer.
Here.
And Mayor Mecha.
Present. Thank you. We'll now move to oral communications where any member of the public may speak on any item that is not on the agenda that is relevant to the city of Monte Sereno. If you would like to make a public comment, please raise your virtual hand, or if you're in the audience, you may approach the podium. Would anyone like to speak?
There are no hands.
No hands are raised. No one is here that wants to speak, so I will close oral communications. And we have any written communications?
The only written communication was forwarded to you.
Okay, we do have a written communication, but I believe that relates to the agenda item. So we'll move to the agenda. If you could scroll down a little bit, please. This is to consider a representative from the city of Monte Sereno from the public that will be the fifth member of the community center committee, which is currently comprised of four individuals, two from city council and two from the site and architectural commission. It's both myself and Vice Mayor Walshimer from city council, and it is Chair Zeidler and Commissioner White from the Site and Architectural Commission. I believe that we have three applicants for this.
One.
Just, we have three applicants for this. And then there's a note from the third or one of the three applicants. And if you could be so kind as to read that into the record, please.
So an email was received stating the following, that they wish, they didn't know that.
If you could just read it, that would be great.
Dear Joyce, I did not know that Heather Harrington was applying for this position. Heather is the most qualified applicant, so I'm withdrawing my application and endorsing. Endorsing her. This was by the applicant who originally said Mary Allen.
Mary Allen. Okay, thank you. So we have, we have two applicants. Can you? Well, first of all, what I'd like to do is is I'd like to say I think I'm speaking on behalf of the committee that we welcome input from everyone from the city of Monte Sereno. So of the three applicants, Mary is already taking herself out of the running. But if she, she is most welcome to say, to provide her full input as if she was a member of the committee. She's not a voting person. On the, and of the two people that are in the audience tonight that would like this position, whichever one of the two of you does not is not appointed to the, to the committee, you have the ability to attend every meeting and to provide input. And we would value that and look forward to that. So if, if we could just go through the application, just not their application, but, but the application in general. I'd just like to make a few comments on it.
So they're all the applications are.
Oh, the applications are here. Okay. So which is the first one that we've got?
So it's, the first one is Mary who has withdrawn.
She's withdrawn, okay.
And then we have Heather's application.
So this is Heather's, and she has outlined her education here and her involvement with this. Her volunteer activities. Go to the next page, please. This is all in the packet. And then on the first question is aligns her interest in it. The second question is, has she been a member of our site and architectural commission? And we'll ask each of the applicants to do that, to go through it. Then the third question is to describe their experience with development plans, et cetera. And that says, as a committee member, the architect that we're working with. It would be helpful to have a base level of knowledge, so that's, that's the value of that, of number three. What's number four? What's the question is?
The committee will, the committee will be meeting several times.
Oh, we're gonna be, yes, this has to do with the frequency of the meetings and the ability to meet. So we want to make sure that someone that's on the committee is going to be able to meet with us. Then the next one is I can't see it is.
Did you see as he issues to?
Oh, the key issues. Then the next question, question six is.
How long have you resigned to Monte Sereno?
Right? How long have you been here? And the seventh question is.
What are the strengths you possess that you believe will make a new successful representative of the residents of the city of Monte Sereno to serve on the community center?
Okay, and we said that we would like to hear from the applicants. We've got both applicants here in chambers. Would either one of you like to speak? And I would invite you to do so. So Heather was the first, the second application up here. So if you could go ahead or?
Yeah, sure. It's all there. I tried to edit it down, so it was simple, but it's what I do professionally, so I have background with all of the above. It's what I do. I'm curious, though. I had some questions for you, if that was okay. So part of this commission, this ad hoc committee that you're making, what is its role? Is its role to be the client for the project to, can you just explain what the role specifically would be?
Yes, and I I believe that we can both answer that, but what, what we're looking for is a committee that has enough voice from the community and knowledge of what the community requirements are so that that can be conveyed to the architect and the architect says, oh, this is what I'm thinking of. Here's the, here's the site, here's the, the rooms, here's the, you know, what it's going to do, the components inside, and then the committee gives feedback. Also, members of the public can give feedback on that. So the committee also becomes a recommending body to the city of Monte Sereno that says, we looked at this and this is what we recommend. But they don't make a decision. City council makes the decision on whatever it is. I believe that we wanted to have an odd number of people so that, you know, we started even number of people on the committee. We wanted to have someone from the public. And I believe you attended the first meeting and you participated in that. I suspect that future meetings will be very similar to that. And I do know that we're trying to set up another meeting or next week to continue moving this ahead. Does that answer, did I answer? So who's the client? City council is the client, but this is a recommending body to the city council.
Okay. I just wanted to.
Yeah.
That was gonna be.
Go, go ahead. That was definitely a great question. And I think one of the things that people we get from the cities, you know, we don't know what's going on. You guys do it without seeing the participants. This has been a great effort that Mayor Mecha has put forward to bring the city more involved and directly as a city representative. You know, we use them. I mean, we're all city representatives too, but.
Right, and I.
And we try to build it as a really nice community center for the city.
Right, and I really like the idea of including the other applicants in these meetings too. I think that would, I mean, whoever ends up being, I think it'd be nice if we all were included. Does anyone else have any more questions?
So you were on, when I was on site and architecture, I'm pretty sure you were the chair.
I was, I've been chair, I've been vice chair. I was on it, I thought eight years, but really it was ten years. So I was on for a very long time and saw the city change a lot in that ten year period. I've lived in the city for thirty years exactly at this point. So I've kind of grown up in the city. We bought our first home thirty years ago. So, and I've loved raising my family here and being part of the community and giving back. And I feel like I have the skills to help this committee out, whether it's as a citizen or part of the committee, either way. So.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, questions and some comments, maybe. This is brand new for the city. We've never done anything like this. We, we approve houses, we we set ordinances, but we've never built a community center in Monte Sereno. So we're really looking for guidance from the, from the fifth person on the committee. And we would encourage as many people from the, from the residency, the residents of the city to attend the meetings and or provide input through the committee members.
Right.
We want all the residents to feel ownership.
Yeah, this is gonna be a legacy that the committee is building. Committee is gonna leave, you know, to say, we had input on this area. It's been here forever.
And I can see how important the community input in this whole decision-making process is gonna be. So yeah, whether I can serve on the committee or as a, just a private citizen at the meetings, I'd be happy to do either. So we could.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Turner, I just, I see you've got your hand raised. Go ahead.
You're on mute, Councilmember Turner.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to make some comments about having Vidya as, as, I think that's the way you pronounce your name, Vidya, as, as a candidate for the committee. Some of the positive things that I've seen is that, is that she lives on the other side of Monte Sereno, on the other half of Highway Nine. And none of us actually live there. So having her as part of the committee would be very helpful. I think the second thing that I see as a positive is the fact that she will get to meet a lot of the city staff and, and council members. And then she can make up her own mind later on as to whether she wants to be part of another committee or even run for city council. So, and, and the third is her is her ability to work with technology as an instructor, as well as a designer. So those are some of the things that I've noticed about her application, and I wanted to say thank you very much for applying.
Okay, I was going to invite her up to address council. Please come forward if you'd like to say something.
Yeah. Mayor and city council, thanks for recognizing me and giving me the opportunity to address you guys. And I really feel honored to not only be a resident of Monte Sereno, but also actively participate in a lot of the city activities. As a background, you know, I am a technologist. I've worked in Silicon Valley for more than twenty-five years at this point. I also teach a lot of computer science classes to senior citizens and young adults. I've worked with the Satoka Community Center, also as well as Get Off Street Creation for conducting classes in the community. And yeah, this is a great opportunity for that. I I mean, I've kind of explained a lot of my background in the, in the application itself. One thing that I do want to highlight is I was part of, I was one of the faculty members at San Jose City College when the technology center was getting built, building newer building at the corner of, I believe it's Basscom and Moore Park. So I was part of that committee. You know, I was going through all the building permits, setting up the state of the art then, which this was probably about twenty years at this point, but definitely state of the art then, technology center. I wanted to run senior classes in Monte Sereno for a while for technology and never found a suitable place to run it. I've run classes out of my living room for some time for young adults, especially online during the COVID season. I've raised two wonderful children in this community, both of them are adults now, and they have both served on the commission for Monte Sereno. My husband here, Narayan, has also served on the site and architecture committee. I myself have been on the Long Term Vision Committee a few years ago. I believe Councilmember Craig was part of that commission as well. So I've been actively involved in this committee quite a bit and also bring a pretty Silicon Valley-centric view to what a futuristic community center can be.
Any questions of council?
No, we really appreciate your reply. It's great. I think the vision that you would bring and continue to support the committee, that'd be great.
I think Councilmember Turner has already made some comments. Councilmember Craig, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions right now. I will say that I did, I did work with Vijaya at the, back in two thousand fourteen, and I remember that committee very well. She was, she was a great asset to it. So thanks, thanks for applying again.
I have a question. I admire your background and your interest. If you were not selected to be on the committee, would you participate as a member of the public?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I have no further questions. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can make some comments. We have to select between one of the two applicants. I think they're both strong candidates. In terms of the actual committee itself, I think that there's a lot of value in having been on the site and architectural commission because you actually have to sit through meeting after meeting. You hear the architects, what they're proposing, what the, what the applicants want. Also, in dealing with variances and other things, and I think that we're gonna have a couple of technical issues coming up at the committee level on this. And when, when I look at the requirements, I, I think that that I I would have to put my vote to you, so. But we've also. Heather, Ms. Harrington, I'm sorry, they're sitting right behind each other. So, and the fact that you will participate, you would both participate, that's great. I know that Heather was here in the first meeting. And just in terms of moving forward with, with a group that understands the, you know, how a committee works at the Brown Act. This is a Brown Act group, by the way. So that would be, that would be fine. That's the way, but again, both qualified candidates. Other comments before we do a vote?
I, I have one quick comment.
Go ahead.
So we have two excellent candidates, and both candidates have indicated that they would like to participate, even if they are not selected. So can we make a motion that we just accept both of the applicants? I think having an extra member on the committee, it gives us, it just gives us more, more strength to, to really come out with a great community center.
We've got Councilmember Turner has her hand raised, but we've also got Attorney Ruten on the, as well. Would you like to say something first, Attorney Ruten?
Yeah, I, I was just going to remind you to make sure that we have no public comment on this agenda item before the council votes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. We'll take public comment immediately after Councilmember Turner.
Yes, I just wanted to say I agree a hundred percent with Councilmember Burton Craig.
Okay, so here's a question for Attorney Ruten. Could we have another person from the public on this committee?
Yes, yes, we could. My only slight concern is that our agenda item is considered an appoint one resident. So we've agendized this as appointment for one position. I, I certainly think we could, we could put appointment of a second position if that's the council's pleasure on any subsequent agenda that we have coming soon.
Yeah, I, I actually have to do that because this committee has been appointed at the last meeting that we had by council. And so the board was to have one member or a resident if wanting three, two, or even three. We would have to, have to do it at the next meeting.
So my question is, how do you actually know to keep it as an odd number, personally?
That's what I'm saying, maybe two or three. So we have to do seven, five. But then the city council needs to be concerned, do we need more residents? Do we need more city council people on that? But I think it's a good suggestion. Maybe put that, we appoint one now, because that's on the agenda item. And then the person who does not get appointed, they or anybody else technically speaking could apply for future, if the city council decides to increase the committee to six members or seven members.
So I have I have another, I have another alternative. On the JPs that I sit on, there's an alternate. So, so for example, Javan, when you couldn't attend S V C E, then you said, Brian, you're the alternate. You attend in my, on my behalf. And you're a full voting member. So then maybe what we could do, thinking of oh, is appoint one person and then have the others an alternate, and maybe we appoint the others as an alternate at a subsequent meeting. Go ahead, Attorney Ruten.
Yeah, that, that was going to be my, my only suggestion was i- if, if you would like to have an alternate, certainly, I think you can appoint that at a, you know, at any subsequent meeting. And if you would desire to have more than, more positions for the public than you've created, I would recommend the council give direction to staff so that we can agendize that properly for a subsequent agenda.
Yeah, I think I like alternate suggestions, but maybe we just agendize that for the next meeting, and I will alter it.
Okay. Go ahead. Yeah, I think I was thinking about the third candidate, and she withdrew her nomination because she found out who one of the other candidates was. I think we're putting in her, putting her in a sort of awkward position here. If we would nominate these two people tonight, or we can't nominate two.
All we can do is, is, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So we can, we can't nominate two tonight.
No.
We can nominate one, and then we can put her on the agenda next time, whether you want to have an alternate or whether you want to have an additional one or two.
And then give more candidates the, the second, the second chance to apply, if you will. Yeah.
Okay, well, I think then I, I know it's getting complicated and it's getting latest, and I, we do have to move forward. So one of the suggestions is that we say, we nominate someone today, we appoint someone today, we come back, we say either have an alternate or expand the number. But we do something today so that we can move forward at our, at our meeting on next week. I'm sorry, I will open public comment for this now. Any member of the public can speak on this before we take a vote.
Yes.
Come forward and introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Narayan Balasubramanian. So I, we have been residents of Monte Sereno since two thousand eleven, so this February, it's gonna be twelve years in the city, so we love the city. So our family loves to volunteer for the city. I've been on the Site and Architecture Commission for a total of about five years. And I have worked with, with Heather Harrington. And, you know, so my kids have volunteered, have been on the youth commission. So my impression was, you know, we have enough representation from the site and architecture on the committee. We have two members from the council and two members from the site and architecture committee who are already there, right? You know, so I think a person that, like Vidya's, can bring a different perspective with the committee. And, you know, she has a lot of energy, a lot of innovation, a lot of very good ideas, and she will do a very good job. So I support her on this. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
The voting process, is that by motion or by ballot, or how do we set that up? Can you help us out with that?
Well, how have we done this in the past when we're selecting a person to represent site and architecture, for example? Go ahead, Attorney Ruten.
I, I think you just have a regular motion in a second.
Well, I know the chair doesn't often make motions, but I'll make a motion. I would make a motion to appoint Heather Harrington tonight to attend the meeting next week. And that council consider, and I don't know if it's two motions or if I can do it in one motion, and council and staff consider how to either appoint an alternate or expand the number at a sub, of, of the committee at a subsequent meeting.
I think that would be a future agenda item.
Yeah.
Motion would just be for one person. Well, I should be speaking favorably, but I think, what you're suggesting is a future agenda.
Go ahead, Attorney Ruten.
Yeah, I, I would, unless you are going to tell us which option you would like staff to consider, I, I would, I would make this two motions. One motion to appoint a candidate and a second motion to direct staff to come back with a future agenda item and give us direction on what you'd like that to be, if anything.
So I'll make the first motion then. Which is to appoint Heather Harrington. I'm sorry.
I second that.
We have a motion in a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig? Councilmember Craig?
You have your unmute for something?
No.
Your answer is no? Your answer is no?
Yes.
Thank you.
My answer is no.
Thank you. Councilmember Logi? Vice Mayor Wolshimer?
Yes.
And Mayor Megachack.
Yeah, aye. Okay, now. Do I have to make a mo, or do I, do we have to make a motion or do we give direction to staff to look at this?
I believe you can provide directions.
We provide direction to staff. And I think the other, oh. Go ahead, Councilmember Turner.
Yes, can I, can I make a motion to choose yet another member of the committee rather than an alternate? Is that a motion that's on the table? It's, it's kind of hard for me to hear when you guys are all in one place and I'm in the background here.
So I believe Councilmember Turner's question is, can she ask that staff be directed to come back with another agenda item to expand the size of the. Committee? And the answer is yes. Staff can be directed to come back with the future agenda item to expand the committee and appoint more members.
Thank you.
I would, I would. This is, this is a motion, this is, this is direction. I think we should look at. Either expanding it or having an alternate. And then whatever staff, and I think we should ask. Our architect. About that too. You know, how he would feel.
Undo that, okay, committee to figure that out. But you probably wonder, does Mary Ellen know also that? Additional things may be coming up and, so she can keep that in mind. And I guess once he. Expanded, we then have to solicit applications again for the appointment.
Yes, yes, yeah, okay. Well. I think that's the end of the agenda, but I would like to thank both of you, actually all three of you in the audience today for coming down here. We're gonna try to meet next week. I will ensure that you get. I'm not looking at you, Heather, you're gonna get this anyways. Look behind you. That you come and attend the meeting and provide your input. That would be super helpful. And I think it's. I'll, I'll send an email on that. With that, any, any other comments before we adjourn? I will adjourn the special meeting at ten forty-four PM.
Alrighty, good night. See you tomorrow, Brian.
Thank you, Burton. Good night, sleep there.